Welcome, Philip.
Thank you.
In this role, one of the things that is really critical is that, while it's not like a 24/7 job necessarily on a day-to-day basis, that there are emergencies, snowstorms. How problematic is it for you to flex your schedule based off of being available for things like that?
I don't see it being a problem. I do it now with the job that I have now. I go in for all overtime. I try to take all overtime because I like the money. But it's something that comes along with the job. It's really no other way to say it. If you need it, you need it.
Quick follow-up to that, though. So, one of the challenges in a small town as a highway superintendent is to, is that you become basically responsible for your own budget.
Yeah.
So, what kind of experience do you have in like, in scheduling management of people that you are working for or with you in order to minimize overtime when it's appropriate?
That's a tough one. I don't have much experience with that. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that I do because that's not fair to you guys.
I really appreciate that.
But, that being said, I'm sure it wouldn't be that hard to figure out and learn how to appropriate, you know, the right calls to make so you're not putting too much where it's not supposed to be.
Fair enough.
Have you had any of the OSHA training that they've been coming around doing with them?
No. The only thing I've done with OSHA is the OSHA 10. That's just an online course. OSHA really hasn't came by our neighborhood until we hadn't had any OSHA classes.
Okay, so they showed up about a month ago now here. And the deal was that if we did an audit with them, that they wouldn't come back and find us if they later found something.
Yeah. If you do voluntary audits, then...
We did voluntary audits because it was a great thing to do.
Yeah.
And so we've done that. You probably ought to ask.
That's it.
Because it was either September 1st or August 1st or something. There was a date, a cutoff date. And then after that, if they showed up, then you could be fined. So, we weren't looking for fines. So, it's, "Let's do the audit." And the good news is, there were a couple of things that were found, but not significant. And they were taken care of and done deal. So, it was a good experience.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we want to stay in front of any of these OSHA requirements because if you don't, it will be fined.
Right.
Yeah, because previously, OSHA didn't apply to municipalities and state entities and that changed.
That must be very recent.
It was just this year that it's become active. Or late last year, I think. Might have been January 1st of this year. So, it's one of those things that we're asking people to be, you know, conscious about and proactive, so.
So, qualifications for the position. What really attracts you to this position based on your experience?
I like to take charge. I'm pretty eager.
Okay.
So, I'm very, very prideful in what I do. So, I can't even like do it with my boss now. I get in there. I just want to lead. I want to teach people. I want people to, I guess, put their best foot forward there at work. I have a very, very strong pride about my word. I speak it very seriously. So, I try to lead with that, with the people that I'm surrounding myself with. I want them to do their best and put their best effort in as well. Because if they don't, they just really don't put in or be here. Just basically trying.
So, what do you feel, you talked a little bit about teamwork and training, but then also about like pushing people to be their best. What kind of assets or skills do you feel that you bring to the job that make you qualified to do that? And how do you, how do you handle that first period of time as you enter a team as a team leader, as a supervisor, and effectively get them bought into that same passion?
You can't jump into that. You have to work into that flow. Feel each personnel, see where everybody is strong, what they're not strong in that. And you really can't. You can't force it. So, you have to take your time with it. I mean, not like a long time, but give it a couple of weeks so you see how everybody acts together. And see which person's gonna be strong at this, which person's gonna be strong at something else. So, then you can bond up together to work together. And each person has a, I think everybody has a different strong point in a work ethic. So, if you get to figure that out, then it's easier to push people to do work together. Because I might be real strong at one point, but Joe might be stronger at a different. But if we can figure that out, then it's much easier to work together and get people working in a team effort.
I have a quick question that's not actually really covered in your resume. Internal Brookfield, we do a lot of our own equipment maintenance.
Yep.
So, how would you rate yourself from a standpoint of those particular skills?
As mechanical skills?
Yeah. And is that something you're open to from a standpoint of operating the highway department that way? Where a lot of the work stays in the house.
That's fine. That's how it holds in us. We work with mechanics. Do you guys have a mechanic, or is it just everybody does a little bit?
I mean, Donald Strick is a mechanic.
Yeah.
Okay. He's really good in mechanical and...
He's a herb horse, too.
And herb horse, yeah.
Because what our old, that was the question I was...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine. I know.
I didn't mean to jump your question because it's not on the paper, so I didn't know.
That's true. Because what our old highway supervisor has done, he's kept, you know, one of the older trucks that we have. And he's kind of, he has kept them and used them for parts so that he can keep the other ones running and he doesn't have to go out and be buying new, you know, trucks all the time. Now, do you have the ability to repair these trucks?
Not by myself, but if I'm working with somebody.
Yeah, working with...
I work with mechanics at my job.
Yeah.
All with the long, that's if we're not plowing, we're helping the mechanics keep up on everything.
Yeah, because he saved us a lot of money over the years by not having to buy a lot of new trucks.
The catch wagons, catch basin truck at $70,000, I don't think you could ever find.
Yeah, no.
That's what he did it for.
Yeah. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was.
Trucks are not...
No, they're not.
Not generally, the time I work where they buy a lot of them, but I don't know how, but...
We're part of a community called 500 down here.
Yeah. I did a little research before I came.
Okay, Clarence, you want to talk?
Oh, yeah, well, you did teamwork, so yes. So, yeah, so if we called your boss, what would be that one project that you've done of late that you'd be most proud of?
Probably the one that we finished last year right before winter.
Okay.
We ripped out all the berm in the neighborhood. We had it reclaimed, not, sorry, not reclaimed, built. We put in, it didn't have granite curving on the radiuses. So, we did all granite curving, all the ADA stuff. And then we got it all back, though. We put the berm in and paved the night before we got that snowstorm in November.
Good.
That would be the job I'm most proud of. It took us from probably end of July to November to do it.
Oh, wow.
It was a big area.
Big project.
Yes. And we only had six, six guys, some guys. So, that's a lot of work. A lot of granite. A lot of granite.
Okay. How do you respond when you've got a whole bunch of tasks in front of you and a certain amount of pressure to get pretty much everything that's on your plate done? What techniques or tactics or how do you handle kind of multiple tasks?
I'd like to see which ones are gonna be the quickest. Just dive in, get it done. There's really no good explanation on that, I don't think. Like I said, we stay very, very busy and with six, seven guys, we all divide and conquer. We all know our strong points and that's where we go. So, that's what I was saying after the teamwork and trying to get everybody figured out. You gotta figure out what everybody's strong points are and then you ditty it up from there. But try to do it together if you can, but you can't always work together. You better divide and conquer. You can't have six guys on one job when you've got 12 different things.
Unless you work for the state.
That doesn't work.
You definitely gotta split things up.
Do you have any questions that you would like to ask about?
Yeah, because I try to find out about the water system in town. I know you have a stand tank.
Yeah, we have this, we have this well. We have their wells. And they're down by, I don't know how familiar you are with Brookfield at all.
A little bit.
They're down on Quaybach Street.
Okay.
They're off, off the road on Quaybach Street. We have wells and that's where the water, that's where the water system is run by.
Okay.
Yeah. And then it comes up into the holding tank. And the holding tank isn't all that old. They've done that probably for maybe, oh, I don't know, five, six years now. It's a pretty new holding tank.
Yeah, I think it might be a little bit longer. I think it's probably closer to eight or nine.
Eight, nine years old, yeah. But it's a new tank.
Do you know roughly how many services are in town? Anything like that?
No.
We're on board for that.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a water board and they also have a water superintendent.
Okay.
Although there's a lot of like cross talk and that's actually a question that we didn't ask previously, but... I know you say you're kind of the number two fellow where you're at and it looks like you're mostly in like operator positions along the way. But how do you handle like working with somebody who's like not in your same food chain to get jobs done? Like from a standpoint of like a different supervisor or like a peer that doesn't necessarily work, either work for you or work for your supervisor? Have you ever had to work across departments in any of your roles?
Just at the town, working with the water department on water breaks, you know, stuff like that.
They've kind of done the same thing here. They all work together. There's a problem.
Everybody knows each other, so pretty much get along very well with everybody, so. As long as, how are the guys that are here now, are they...
Good guys.
Been here a long time?
Yes.
Yes.
That's one of our challenges.
And we did, we just hired a new water superintendent because our other one, he retired at Bruce's Hill. That's probably, oh, I'd say 20 years he was the highway supervisor of the water and then he was a water commissioner before that.
Yeah.
So, he was with us many years. And so, we've just hired a new one.
Is the other guy young, old, between both?
The new water person's pretty young-ish.
Yeah, he's a youngish, maybe mid-30s.
Yeah, and then most of the folks at, in the highway department, though, are older. Most of them are...
About 30-plus years' experience.
Yeah, Donald has 30, two years, and I don't know how many...
Something's close.
Close to that.
He's close to that. Mike, I don't know how long he's been involved.
Yeah.
He just, he's worked for us for a few years.
Right.
But again, he's an older.
He's an older guy, too.
One of the challenges of a small town is attrition.
Yeah.
Folks going to bigger towns and those kinds of things. It's a struggle.
I'm sure it is.
Skill, hanging on to skilled people is tough.
I think all, not necessarily just a small town, I think all towns are finding that to be...
Well, especially with the economy going the way the economy's going.
Yes. I know a lot of different people in a lot of different areas, you know, but like the towns do. But it seems like everybody is having that problem keeping or just finding the right people. There's so many other jobs, like you said, the economy's not so well. And it's really hard to find somebody to stay focused in the town jobs.
It is.
Where they overlook the other things, like the benefits and, you know.
That's true.
Yeah.
They don't, they miss that target picture.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate.
So, do you have some more questions?
I really appreciate you coming in and sharing what it is.
I appreciate you guys having me. I really, really appreciate it. It's very nice to meet all of you.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Would you guys like, I don't think I have references, would you like a copy of references?
Yeah, if you want to share.
I think I actually slipped another resume through, but sorry about that.
Okay, it's okay. There are worse things than being over.
Thank you.
As well. I was gonna say, he didn't even hold it against me. I almost killed him with the door. I'm not making you laugh.
That's mine. Have a great night.
Okay, you too.
Take care.
Can we have, can we break for a minute?
Yeah.
I'm gonna break for a minute.
So...
You want the, you got recess?
Yes, a few minutes.
I'll make a motion to recess for like five minutes.
Okay, I'd like to give a question for town who are going to be watching this this evening that we had started, Sharon had another taping that she had to do. And it wasn't because she missed this one, so we had, she started when we were interviewing our second candidate. Our next one here is James Nestor.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Okay. This, the highway supervisor position here in the town of Brookfield is a working supervisor. I don't know if you understand that.
I do.
Position. Okay. Okay, one of the first things we ask, if you're a successful candidate, can you pass both a core intensive and a physical exam?
Core, yes. Physical, I hope so.
Okay, we'll go on to Mr. Carter.
Oh, yeah, sure. Back to supervisor experience, I mean, I do, the job typically here is a working superintendent. And I want to be clear that that's what we do, but back to if that's the role and that's how it's approached, your experience in that kind of environment?
So, I'm currently a project manager, but I was working in front of that. Today, I was in the field all day, laying out jobs. Meeting, when I met with the town of Concord this morning, the town of, the city of Manchester, the city of Concord, the city of Manchester this afternoon. I don't, I'm in the office 30% of the time this year, so it's... I don't work on trucks anymore, but I have in the past. I fully understand when you say a working position. I fully understand the scope of what that is.
Yeah, and by the way, we all have the same questions.
Excellent.
All right. And we are repeating to the third time. Your turn.
Okay, so, can you talk to me a little bit about your supervisory experience? Like, in a leadership role in an organization, whether it was by the title or whether it was just by the activities that you were doing?
Sure, so, I can go back to the 80s if you'd like. My family owned a construction company and being one of the owner's nephews, I guess, I was kind of cast into a supervisor position without really wanting to be or desiring to be, but I guess I needed to be at the time. So, I got a crack course in the supervisor of craft employees real quick, especially if you're old, the 80s were like in construction, it was not quite as friendly and safe as it is now. Later on, took over the company, started my own business. Had to supervise, manage all phases from the accounts payable to receivable to maintenance to purchasing to human resource. In my current role, I am a project manager. I manage 30 gas employees. We're not a union company, but it functions very similarly. There's very specific roles and classifications for our employees. How can I expand on that? I don't know. It's, it's, it's pretty intense sometimes.
Fair enough. What do you consider your style of supervising?
So, I'm a diplomat, but I also understand that in the role of leader, I'd like to call it more than a manager, I'm both, but I try to be more of a leader than a manager. I think a leader is harder to find at this point. From what I didn't see, within our, I work for the Middlesex Corporation. We have a large number of employees and there's a lot of people that manage, but really don't, you know, own the job and own the project. A number of project managers have excellent paper. And that's kind of where it ends and it leaves some of the other guys kind of in the blue, let's say. And I don't really, it's not my personality to be like that. I like to lead. I like to teach. And I like to hear the facts and hear the story. I try to be a good listener. Part of my communication skills, I think, personally in a construction environment, it's one of the most important things to be a listener before just a talker, I guess, for lack of a term.
Thank you.
We have some culvert projects coming up here in town. Do you have, what do you have for experience in drainage and culvert training?
A lot. I don't even know where to begin, obviously. I see the culverts in town. I live just up the street and I drive across many of them in North Brookfield. And if I was to give them a rating, I don't think, we can just say F because they can't go any less than that. And my experience is, I put deep culverts in box culverts. Very large sectional pieces, not just the typical piece of ADS pipe that I put here in the town.
We get some big ones.
Some of the large, so I've got a lot of experience in all phases of that. It's the installation process, not really the materials. We're gonna have an engineer, engineer our plans, of course. The installation can be very tricky. I don't know if we do that in-house here in Brookfield.
We were planning on doing a very large culvert project in-house.
You at love the aggressiveness.
Well, as you might look at it, eventually it may or may not be the right decision. But at the same time, back to certifications and whatnot as far as the boxes and all that. Have you had that background?
So, I'm not a professional engineer.
Okay.
I do have a degree in civil engineering among a degree in project management.
Yep.
Very familiar with the process, the procedures, the purchasing, the estimated, the leading of the crew, I think, you know? If we had a good crew that was willing to work, listen again. Something you could maybe pull off. Again, I don't know skill sets or anything, but...
Right. Something that would have to be managed and moved across our fingers. A bit, tree ward?
Well, yeah, tree ward. Are you, also along with this position comes the position of tree ward.
Very nice.
Do you know anything on that idea? Because we have about, just say, 200 trees.
Over 200.
And over 200 trees.
Just to reassure you, in a town our size, you don't actually have to be a certified arborist in order to be a tree ward.
That's perfect. I'm not a certified arborist. I've cut many trees. I burned 12 quarts a year at my house. I understand. I've talked to that, maybe to a town. Just north of us had a consultant work as a tree ward, you might have been doing, the site distance manager. But no, I'm not afraid of that kind of, that's actually interesting.
And we usually take down about 90 trees a year.
Really?
Yeah. We have a crew that comes in and, you know, takes it down and in the highway, they're usually assistant. They assist them.
Listen.
It's up to you if you want to go. That's fine.
So, emergencies, snowstorms, it sounds like you're coming in from the road. So, I suspect you're used to having to flex your schedule based on the business needs. But how comfortable are you with the fact that this work sometimes is not necessarily scheduled 7 to 3 or 9 to 5 or what have you?
So, let me ask one question to set this up. So, how many trucks, pieces of equipment do we have with snow and ice in town?
Very fine.
It depends on if you do a lot of work with the long tons. So, we've got like basically four to five of the bigger trucks and then usually you're running a couple in one ton that's soft and minor.
Yeah, but three of the long tons, I think.
So, I think it says somewhere in the resume, when I worked for the Middlesex Corp. the first time, I was the superintendent in charge of highway maintenance in Area 4D in the state. There's more lane miles in that state than any other county in the state. Snow and ice was one of them. When I was in business for myself, I had 12 large pieces of equipment.
Yeah.
So, very well aware of the 1 o'clock in the morning phone calls.
Right.
Can I ask the elephant in the room? It sounds like you have like some really big experience. That's a little town.
I know, we're a little bit.
I gotta ask you that question, even though it's not on my list. Is what makes you willing to sit here with three selectmen from a tiny town next to your house? Give them some of what you've done?
That is a perfect, that is the question. Right, why? So, I like my life. My wife and I get along great. I live right up the street. I have a nice house, my dogs. I could walk here. As I said earlier, I met with the city of Concord this morning. Driving, my car's got 170,000 miles on it. It's not that old. I can pay for the car, of course. I can reverse, but it's just, I literally haven't gone home yet. Luckily, I had this in the trunk. I put this on. Came here to meet with us. I'm gonna drive home. I try to go to the gym so I can pass these physical fitness tests that we have for me. I'm gonna go to the gym tonight at 8 o'clock and then get back at the 4. Not that, we wouldn't put in a lot of hours here. We snow and ice, but we, I've done 72 hours without sleep and I don't drink coffee.
Oh, God bless him.
But the rest of the time, I mean, I could like, you know, just thinking of coming here or coming, I know with the town, garage is down the street. I mean, for me, it'd be a massive quality of life issue.
It's fair.
The job itself, I'm not really too intimidated by it, honestly. I had, to be frank and honest, I had applied to the same position in town of Ware and was selected and presented to this board's alignment, similar to this, and a couple more people on that board. Turned the job down because of the pay. I'm willing to take a pay cut for my life. And I make good money, but I, you know, we all know you have to head towards Boston to get paid. I head further than Boston sometimes, apparently, but, but that, you know, that's worth something to me, the time. How much? I don't know. That would be the, that would be the test. And I understand we were talking to 35-ish, 100 people. That was the, I don't want to say excuse, we'll use the word reason, that was the reason in Ware. They were also looking for somebody with a water operator's license.
No, we have a one.
So did that, so did they, which was my question. I'm like, so, I'm very friendly with the director of the public works in the city of Weston. He doesn't have a water operator's license. We have a department for that. That was their, that was their crunch, I guess. But again, I was willing to take quite a substantial pay cut and that was Stuart Beckley out there a number of times and I told him, he was like, "Hey, I'll go here." I didn't want to go that far. I understand we're a small town. I'm willing to make concessions.
Now, here also in Brookfield, what are highway, I don't know what experience you have with like maintaining the trucks and fixing them?
I'll stop you right there and save us all the time a lot.
Because what our previous, the one that just retired here, he used to keep the older trucks and then he'd take the parts off of them so, you know, he could put them on the trucks and so, you know, so we could maintain them and we wouldn't have to be out buying, you know, new trucks all the time.
New trucks are expensive, apparently.
So, do you have the experience of like rebuilding the trucks? Are you working with one of the other companies down there?
I have at my home up the road here, the remnants of a trucking and construction company, which my wife is very happy with. I can't get it in our garage because I have a complete repair shop and I still tinker around, but yeah, that's, it's, that's kind of like the fun part of this to me. I don't do it anymore, but I wander around in our garage sometimes. it's, that's kind of like the fun part of this. I mean, I don't do it anymore, but it's, I wander around in our garage sometimes. It's doing this more. I see the trucks we have. I, I, all of the Brookfields, you know, I pay attention. It's what I've done my whole life, so I see what's going on. I think I would have some good insight into maybe a different way to do things. I understand trucks are expensive. I know my hearing works pretty well. You can just talk to the previous gentleman about a catch basing cleaner truck.
Yep. All right, go ahead, Billson.
Wonderful. They're expensive to purchase a new one. I would, I think there's a better way to do it personally.
Fair.
Less expensive and less liability. That's another thing. Thanks. I have to take the thanks out of it.
Have you had any of the OSHA trainings?
I have.
You have?
I really don't have a need for thirty or forty. I don't work in hazmat situations. I mean, I could. It's just preference.
Say you've just come around here one month ago.
Right.
They're approached at ten three?
What do you expect?
No, they're basically getting ready for the audit, or for audits.
We did a voluntary, uh, did a voluntary audit so that if we had any deficiencies where the OSHA just became applicable to municipalities.
They did.
It gave us an opportunity to do a, a gap analysis. So.
That was my, I was just gonna say, I wasn't sure of municipalities. Were I, I'm very familiar with the city of Worcester. You know, they never wear our hat now, right?
Right. Changed over, I think, in January.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're getting better.
Simple enough. Click safety.
Yep.
He's a hundred and thirty-nine dollars or something.
You have some more questions, though?
I think we got the team thing down and I think that back to your current employer, back to the most proud your current employer, we're pick up the phone and ask, is there something that they'd say gangbusters?
Excellent question. I recently met with my, although I haven't had to review it yet, but I met with my boss. I work directly with the senior vice president and the word he used to describe it was versatility. Apparently I'm good at a lot of things. I don't know if I'm excellent at a lot of things. I won't go that far, but he called me a Swiss army and I don't want to lose you. You do a lot of stuff. I do this, I do that, I do this. I do a number of different jobs. I, I work for our energy division, which is, I manage our gas operations. But I also estimate projects. This winter I'm, I'm our lead estimator in the energy division. I'm the project manager for the gas operations. I do a lot of our admin work because we don't have one. Not my favorite pastime, but we can do it. You name it, I know it. Get trucks and apparently drive them occasionally.
Good. Questions for us?
Um, just the expectation. I mean, what are you really looking for? Typically I'm gonna spell, he's looking for a professional engineer to come in and lead the team. I don't know how realistic that really is, but that's a great idea, I think.
So, yeah, so I think, I think historically speaking, we've, we've gotten by without somebody who necessarily had an engineering degree. And frankly, it was your licensers and your location that, that got you in front of us and not the, the, necessarily the educational credentials. Um, and what we're really looking for is somebody who will come in, appreciate the team we have and the skills that they have and figure out where, you know, their skills can complement that move the town forward. This, this board has been very focused on kind of forward movement of, of getting the town to recognize the potential that we have. I mean, something that we're proud of is that usually, and I know I've commuted for years out of this community, you know when you cross the Brookfield line from a standpoint of snow and ice. Okay? Um, our roads aren't great, but they're not as bad as some in the area. Cause I, I, I used to have a position where I put on similar miles on my vehicle to what we put on. Okay? We want to be that town that, but we've also done that for, on average, about, I think it's fifteen percent less than what our peer towns spend for the same amount of road miles. So if you take a look at like a per road mile percentage of our budget and stuff like that, we, we've done that level of service on basically shoestring. And we need to figure out how to continue to address the issues we have with our culverts. We've got some pretty large road reconstruction projects that really need to happen. We need to do all the paperwork to try to bring money into the town in order to make those things happen. We have an amazing asset with our current highway administrative assistant, cause, cause I think she's brought what?
Million seven a year.
What's that?
She averages a million seven a year.
And grant money coming into the town and we're gonna get some of these projects done.
That's awesome.
Okay? Um, so, so we've got some, we've got some amazing raw material in the town and we, and we need somebody that will be the glue to stick it all together. Right? That's what we're looking for from the person going into this one. Um, so. Is that fair? I'm just speaking for myself, but.
Like you said with the roads, we've had compliments. So we're the best roads in the area. They've always been very good. And plus, you know, like I said it in the beginning, it, it's a working supervisor. It's not somebody, you know, that just, he's in the office, you know, doing his, you know, doing, figuring out, you know, what he's gonna do next for the job, cause he's actually out there with the crew working along. And like, you know, with the tree ward part, they work with, they're out there also and they work with, they hire a tree firm and they're, they're out there actually doing the work with them also. And do you have, you didn't ask to, with chapter ninety money?
Familiar with, um, more familiar with grant writing and proposal work, but in my estimating role, I sort of kind of do. Which was, you touched that point. That's great because like to have somebody to help do that, that can get, I don't know exactly how the ninety grant writing works, but I know some other larger federal projects that I've worked on can be a pile of paper.
Yeah, we're doing municipal butter bill or billing, um, this Thursday where we'll get, be able to get agreed that, that we can move forward with that certification to get some more points for the next set of ground, uh, grant writing.
Wow, great.
Open space goes on May first. We'll get that done by the thirtieth. So several things that we're doing in the works to be able to get more points, to get more grants. Cause otherwise this town could not afford it.
That's terrific.
Anything else for us?
I can ask a lot of questions, but.
Up to you.
Just prying questions, like why is the position available?
Because he retired.
Retiring? Perfect.
And he, he needed the time to get this, uh, he couldn't get enough time in for Worcester County retirement. And so he needed to go on the side to get, to finish that up, be able to get a retirement.
Anything else you want to ask me? I mean, there's, there's a number of papers here we can check.
Now, do you have all the licenses that are required?
Um, I think so.
And he still has a C, it looks like you still have an active CBL, right?
I do.
So have you had a recent DOT card? Do you have the DOT medical certificate? So.
That's actually, if you like licenses, we can hold them. I know you're probably not familiar with that, any TTC three license. So that's a, that stands for Northeast Transportation Training Certification Program. And it specifically points out that I'm a licensed assurance technician for highway maintenance.
There you go.
But quite that means I don't know, but.
And you do actually have a mass construction supervisor?
I do.
So you could actually pull permits times when you needed to like do a demolition or something like that?
I could, yes. Demolition, that.
We do on occasion do some, some of that with our highway department.
The license are, but the, the license specifications themselves are kind of tricky. They call it thirty-five thousand cubic feet on a license. When you measure that into a house, what I can actually pull for permits, but quite small.
Fair enough.
But I do have one, yes.
Yeah, I guess we'll get through more buildings to come down.
You know, if we do, if you were to have a subcontract stuff up and next up stuff, the concrete buildings, right, the license, I mean, I can kind of hold there. Keep it a fire, you know what I mean?
Hold my accountable for, for how they used to.
What else? The hoisting engineer license, the one B means I've operated slash owned cranes before. Not that we have that here in town, but.
Well, one, one other thought that we had, the central street, the street that's in front of us to do a rebuild. Number of years since it had been rebuilt, a lot of trenching to dig out there. So it was gonna be a fairly large machine to be able to do what needs to get done up there.
We had also this year with the chapter ninety money, we had planned on being, this is central street out here. We had planned on doing central street, but with the, with on my previous retiring, we kind of put that on hold. The whole street is gonna be dug up there. We're putting new water pipe, new water, and we're gonna do sidewalks, some homework.
Yeah, but we also were putting on hold a pursuit of grant money as well.
Yeah, pursuit of grant money. But no, but we did have the money in chapter ninety.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. And again, is this typically self-perform work? Do you advertise it?
We, we do predominantly self-perform work. Um, we do bring in contractors for pieces of it, depending. Really, we're, we're focused on best value and a lot of times it's doing it in-house. Even our, our police department, we did most of the dirt work in-house for the police department.
Yeah, well, just like playground. Playground's eighty thousand dollars in total in and out. And the guys, if they do it for the groundwork for probably twenty, twenty-five, we get that credit and we can get part money for the seventy percent balance. So you, you play the games that way, you can get a lot of.
You said you've got some good resources in town, obviously. That's it's kind of, uh, really.
Yeah, so.
In fact, we, we hired a grant writer for, you got the high wood barn down the hill, you got town hall up the hill. Well, we have a grant writer up the hill now that's focused on clear government, that she just, he was given that award, so we know what we're spending in comparison to others. Kind of get a feel of how we should approach the future.
Sure. Sounds like you get a great place, by the way.
We work hard.
Anyway.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate your time.
Pleasure to meet you.
Go to the gym.
Nice to meet you.
Do, do, do time for me.
I go home first?
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I guess it's other now, right?
Or we want to.
I think we need to discuss this.
Yeah.
This guy's got all the degrees and everything. The, the other guys are younger guys. Would want to have to work into the job. The cha, challenge would be if you were to operate to him is.
It's gonna be pay.
Pay.
And I think another thing too, I mean, I think he's, I think he's more used to being the boss and not being out there working. That's my only problem with him.
Um, I got the impression he spends a lot of time on the job sites.
No, he said he supervises thirty people right now. So I think he's used to being more the supervisor capacity than being a working supervisor. That's the feeling I got with him.
But then they have the flip side of that is the time to get either of the others up to speed. If they don't have any of that experience, that's the challenge. I mean, I, I'd take a run at this guy. I'd take a run at him.
Yeah, and see if, if, if what our, if our scale fits. If it doesn't fit, we can be very simple about it.
Yeah.
And, and warn them that there's not any room, right?
No, really, no.
And, uh, and go from there.
You know, see, figure out what we want to pay him and then I don't know, we have to find out the vacation because we just changed that around. And we should give him a little extra vacation than what he's used to having.
That's possible.
I, with this time in those companies, you're probably not gonna get a lot much, he doesn't have that long of that company that he's with.
That's my only, that's the only thing that I have qualms about what he's been saying.
Oh, I agree. Totally agree.
Yeah.
That's my only thing.
Well, and, and I don't think, I don't want to in any way discount your concern, Linda, cause I think that there's, there's some risk there. Um, I think he's pretty clear on what the expectation is, though. He's not a, he's, 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 uh, I'm gonna say, I, I don't think we were unclear in the communication. I think he's surprised at how much we do in-house. I think that's a little bit intimidating to him because he understands how complicated some of that stuff is. Flip side is he understands how complicated some of that stuff is.
Where, where does he live?
North Brookfield.
He lives right up here on the Brookfield Road.
Yeah, he literally could, his, his comment early in the interview was he could walk to work.
That's nice.
Yeah.
And what do you think I have to?
Ryan beats out Phil as far as my.
Yes.
And it's just his, his inexperience. He's a hard worker.
Oh, yeah, very hard.
So, so he's got that reputation. You, you want to visit it and talk and kind of get, got himself an understanding in the field. So I, it would be Ryan.
Yeah, I get, I get the impression that Phil could, um, might come in swinging so hard that he winds up losing any support from the, from the team.
So basically you'd be between the two of them.
Yeah.
And only we're, I, again, I would say, we, we've got the column study. We know what we're paying. I would charge my friend here with a challenge. Paying, paying vacation to see what, what would fit, what could fit.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we need to consider and, and part of it we can just get from the treasurer's office is, is I would pull like a five-year historic on what we paid Irving, including, um, what got paid out of snow and ice for overtime. Because it is a, it is an hourly position.
It's a piece of it.
And, and the, the flip side would be is if we wanted to take a look at that, that five year for snow and ice and I don't think we specified whether it was an hourly or salary position. So if we want to take the risk out for ourselves, we can, we could take a look at what that five-year all-in expense was, including the, the overtime for snow and have them understand it's a salary position without overtime and stabilize the column.
It's worth the discussion. That's why I say, if you were to agree with me, to just have a conversation to see if we're even close.
Yeah, yeah, cause that, I mean, cause we can, we can, we can paint that picture, even if it does stay in an hourly position and just, and just say, look, but there's typically an opportunity for about this much overtime. And, you know, depending on what the work conditions are in snow and such, so, cause that's gotta figure into it. You have a frowny face over there, Mr. Cleveland. Did you have?
How's the grease that?
We didn't seem to, oh, we didn't ask any.
No.
Didn't ask any.
It's gonna be a couple of weeks anyway.
It'd be anywhere two to four, depending.
Yeah.
Well, you've been in construction business all these years. How, what, we asked your opinion when he's concerned.
Oh, I'd like to go ahead.
Yeah. But you gotta see if you're close.
Yeah.
Well, if you're that close, that's even closer than what her was.
Yeah.
Except for.
Oh, no, I'm saying back to the, the challenge is salary and vacation time. That's the real challenge.
Yeah, so I could, I could reach out to the treasurer's office and find out. I know, I mean, I know that the base salary is what's in the, in the warrant article, but I need to understand how much you pull in from an overtime perspective.
And having that conversation.
And have that piece of the conversation with him to, to let him know that.
Yeah, we have to call him again.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we understood, if it made any sense, because there's no reason to bring him back in if it, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, cause I, yeah, and, and he strikes me as the kind of person that with the understanding that this is a working position, I don't think he's gonna be afraid to dig in. He doesn't strike me as being physically lazy and he's gonna be, he'd have a hard time watching somebody else work.
You'd be telling the first couple of weeks, ladies, you have to go.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably so.
Yeah, I mean, if he doesn't, if he didn't work.
If he doesn't, I would then go, go to, to Ryan and see what we could do, because then we've got a lot of work to get him up to, up to speed.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Very decent young man, though.
Yes, oh, yeah. He's a worker. And that's the reputation he has.
We have a recommendation on him from the, I think it was in North Brookfield Highway. And he highly recommends the, the highway.
So do we need to vote to have that conversation?
So I'll make a motion to, um, to, that I'll do the research regarding historic compensation on the highway superintendent inclusive of overtime. And, uh, do you want me to just provide the numbers back? Do you want to have the conversation with him, Linda, or do you want me to reach out with a, a preliminary offer?
I would, I would do it with her because then you're the chair and you get the vote. That's why, why I defer to you, because either of us as chair or vice chair can always say no.
Yeah, right.
If you have.
If I, I can have a conversation with him, I can, I can at least have the, the reach out and the somewhat the, the negotiating aspect of it and just bring it back to the board. Okay, that makes sense.
Right, and the sooner we can do that, the better.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Lonnie. I'll, I'll send her an email tonight, but call her in the morning.
Have a conversation with them hopefully sometime tomorrow.
Yep, I can do that.
He's making that vote.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll, I'll. Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll do the research and then reach out with a, a preliminary offer. Phrase, phrase very specifically that it would be pending approval of the board.
Like vacation time?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk about the full package of, and that way we can, and, and actually, I'm fairly familiar from our contract negotiations with the police, what our actual, like, insurance package and stuff like that actually looks like. So if he has any questions about that, I'll, I'll direct him back to the treasurer, but I do at least have some high-level information.
And like also explain, it's not a contract, three-year appointment.
Right, it's a three-year appointment, so I'll explain to him the, the, the terms of that. And then, uh, I'll see what kind of response I get, if, if it's not even in the right neighborhood. I guess my question would then be, do we want to meet again to talk salary for what the offer would look like with our secondary candidate? Because I think with this gentleman, we need to pretty much hit whatever max we have in the till from the standpoint of what we were paying Herb, inclusive of his overtime. I, I do honestly think if we, if we were to go with Ryan, that we probably look at backing off just a little bit based on his experience.
Right.
Right?
But I, I know, that's still my reservation about, I mean, with him being more of a supervisor, I still have that reservation.
But that's why we have the conversation first.
I, I really have a, it bothers me, I think this is what he thinks he's going to do, is go in just being a supervisor. When the guys are going to be, I, he didn't ask how many guys work down there, and we only have like two guys that work down there. And I mean, now we have a system.
See, Lonnie, I can, I can make that very, I can make that very clear to him.
I, yes, I would like to make that very clear, you know, that he has, he's got to be out there working just like they are, plowing snow, you know, he's got to be hands-on. Just can't be sitting in the office and telling people.
No, that won't, that won't work. That won't work.
And I know Herb had talked, when we had gone in, remember Karen, when we spoke to the advisory board, Herb had talked about hiring a third person on. I don't know if you discussed that with either of you.
He was to put something in the budget.
Yeah, and he took, yeah, he had talked to the advisory board about it, and I guess he made pretty plain and clear in that they.
Yeah, when, when he had the conversation with me, because of, because of the way he framed up what some of the work was, I actually asked him to at least provide a comparison to uh, the board, what it would take to contract out the work that he was associating with that full-time, no.
And he, I think they were pretty much in favor.
Yes, they were, they did not object.
Pretty much in favor on board with it, because they said he presented it quite well.
Okay.
Close there. So I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, any more discussion on, uh, favor? Okay, now we'll move on to.
Do you want to do correspondence next? For some reason, the executive session I put.
Well, I want to do other too.
Oh, other, yeah, do other first, yeah, and then correspondence.
Okay, I, we had, we had a two-hour meeting today with, I had gotten in touch with a lot of associations, like I told you.
Yep.
And I had a lady get back to me, her name is Marilyn Matthews. She used to be the financial advisor or team leader down in Bellingham. And she, and she lives in Webster.
Oh, okay.
And so she's been retired for seven years, and she said that she would be willing to come in here to do the warrants. And she said she wished she had more time, because she noticed by looking at different things, that there's a lot of work that we got in here in the town.
Okay.
Yeah, and we know that.
And she said that she would come in for thirty-five dollars now, which is good, so that's not bad at all. And she would work, um, so I guess Lonnie was working with her to get her, if we approve, um, to hire her tonight on a temporary, as a temporary accountant. She was going to get her, her VEDR, so that she could like work at home on some of these things. She would probably work, come in on Thursdays, I think she said, and she would take home the warrants. And then she would be back on Monday, and she would print everything out.
Okay.
And then we also talked about Patty, and what's Patty's last name?
King.
We brought Patty Kenyon, because Patty has been doing about five hours a week. And she's been like scanning a lot of things in, but she said she would like teach her to do a little bit of, you know, entering into the VEDR system.
So like an accounting clerk?
Yeah.
Sort of.
A little.
And I think we actually have a budget and a position for an accounting clerk.
We do.
Well, that's what she, yeah, but Patty was only working five hours, five hours a week for her. But she said she would like to train her to do that, because she says you need to have a backup person to do some of that work, which you were in before.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And then she said she would love, she does like a challenge, but she says that she doesn't have the time. Because she thinks that we've got to look around to get somebody in here who can come in and have all of the departments prove with each other.
Yeah.
You know, and she says, somebody has to come in like for a whole week at a time, like a week to spend it with the tax collector. And the, and the accountant.
Yeah.
And, you know, the water and the treasurer, so that they all can prove, because right now, none of them are even proving. And we have, she has a big challenge right there.
So the idea of George coming and doing more of that work, the account.
George Hunt.
No, he doesn't, he just doesn't have the time. And then I had, you had mentioned something here about Pioneer Valley?
Well, Pioneer, okay, so there are a group of towns out west, they're working through Pioneer Valley, that have, have come into a cooperative. And again, I'd rely on you to chat with, if, if he came back, he was supposed to come back to see if they had extra time available.
Now, who, can we have?
Okay, so that was, uh, Connor Robal.
Okay, so right here, will he be coming in?
No, no, I, I said, hold off. Well, Connor went to Pioneer Valley. Uh, the guy that was doing the work for Pioneer Valley was to come back to see whether or not he had room available. And it's a matter of a conversation between that person, the emails there for the contact person. And it was relative whether or not you wanted to reach out to that person to say yea or nay.
No, I, I'll talk to him, what needs to be done.
Yeah, and just see what they would be quoting.
Now, does he have misfits?
Oh, yeah, this is a, five towns have gathered together, Goshen, just, it sounded like the towns north of UMass, Amherst, are all small towns just like us, and that they've been using this entity, this, this municipal financial firm to, to do a shared service. And so I'm wondering, if he's going five towns.
Seeing if they can add us.
Can they add one more? And then the other email that we have from Connor was whether or not CMRPC wants to do something. And I think it's further down the road for us.
Yeah.
But the, this guy, if they could do some hours for us on the mechanics, that would be a big deal.
And when Marilyn was down here today, she had looked at her last, when did she?
Yeah.
And it took a lot of negatives on, she didn't like look at the water.
Well, we need to rationalize, we had to do that for town meeting anyway, so that's it. So important that we get somebody in here to be able to do that for us.
Oh, and then also, okay, Lonnie, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Marilyn Matthews as our temporary accountant for hourly wage of thirty-five dollars now.
You have that motion?
I'll second that.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay, then I heard back from Mary Jane Hand, who pretty much in charge of the DOR. She is releasing our chapter seventy money only for March and April. And we have to get back to her by March, May seventeenth, and let her know the progress that we have done. Because I guess Marilyn had already talked to her, and she knows just what we're facing here in Brookfield, because last year, we faced a lot of the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, oh, yeah, then another, another thing also, um, they went out for, did they go up to the bid today? For the, um, they talked to Unibank about going out for the bond. They have to go in there with a loan or a bond for the police station.
Right.
Right.
And they wanted, um, they wanted twenty seventeen, they wanted to see the balance sheet plus Schedule A. And we can give them that, but we can't give them anything for twenty eighteen. So she thinks that that might be a problem.
Yeah, let's get going, right?
Yeah, that's what we better do, we better, we better get somebody and get going, and get all this done.
Yeah.
Like, she, she had told her, she said we don't have any free cash for town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wonder, even if we have to look to see if we'll be able to do the regular operating budget.
Oh, it's good.
There's a lot, a lot of things.
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks to get done, so I will, I will call Connor tomorrow.
Yeah, Connor, and then he gave you a contact for the group that does the five towns.
Okay, and see if we can get somebody to come down.
Yeah.
Okay, anything, okay, all right, what else do we have here, Karen? Connor's phone?
Yeah, that, it's, um.
Does anybody else have anything under other table?
No, I just share with that, like, I've got three people signed up to help with the beach.
Oh, great.
So we're going to do that, yeah, it is, so hopefully we can figure it out. Be ready for the town meeting to decide whether or not we go forward or not.
Okay, great.
So we'll talk about it then.
Okay, this is, this is support for the Palmer rail stop.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to support.
Yes, I will make a motion too for that.
Yeah, there's a letter, it's signed, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is it a letter reading?
I think I'll, yeah, I typed it up, yeah, I already gave you a template. And I think, isn't that from Charlie Blanchard, I think?
Yes, Charlie's driving, yeah.
I, after I had retired, I worked for Charlie for a year, because they had hired a new town clerk up there, and I wanted to train her, and Charlie's a great guy.
He's a hood, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, if we can get this thing.
Oh, that would be great.
The next stop wants to be here.
We got the old train station here years ago in Brookfield, and it went quite, quite well, from what I know. Maybe you'll be older, my older, older siblings in the family.
Yeah.
Where was the train station?
It was right down, we went over before you go over the bridge, it sat right down there onto the left. Onto the right, I mean, there was a train station down there, and there was an old gray mill, it was quite, yeah, a train station here. And my father, I guess, from what I remember, my, he used to be a mail carrier, it was my time, he used to bring mail down, they had two that had to get up and. That's where it was, it was quite busy. And then they also had in Brookfield, they all had their own, we all had our own train stations in my time. But the closest thing now was what's, what's.
What's, what's Brookfield?
Our, our New Haven, Connecticut, they, we do have Worcester too, but I mean, New Haven, Connecticut too. So that would be great, if we could get something up in Palmer. Okay, so I guess that's about it, our next thing is about going into executive session.
Motion moving to executive session.
Second that motion.
Okay, and that's on the number three, and it's right on, right on the, yeah, right on the agenda.
Yeah, I wrote it on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, the item listed that was made discussed are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, oh, down, is it down here?
It, it receives as executive session exemption three.
Yeah, exemption three, yeah.
To discuss strategy.
Strategy, okay, I thought that. Okay, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation. If an open meeting may have any detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, position of public body and the chair of the clerks. So I agree, I'll move on.
Sandra.
Cough on I.
Any discussion on that, on favor?
Aye. And then. And we'll reconvene just for adjournment.
We'll reconvene through adjournment.
Yep.